Open please. Can we just go through who's attending? Mike Little, are you there Mike?
Excuse me, excuse me. I can't hear, there's a scratching noise going across here. I don't know what's doing it, after that last meeting. There's a scratching noise going across and I can't hear what you're saying. I still, Mike, Mike are you there?
It's coming from Marie's microphone.
Mike, I didn't hear what you said, you were very, very low in volume.
Can you hear me okay now?
That's better.
Yeah, it's coming from Marie Rose's device. It's ambient noise from the television or radio somewhere in the house.
So the noise stopped.
Personally deal with that, it all needs to be married.
Okay, right, we'll start again. I'm looking at the screen now, in attendance we have Mike Little, is that right?
I'm here.
Claire? Marie? David?
Yes.
Kevin? Alan, Alan Rhea?
Yeah, yeah.
Viv Patterson? I assume Viv Patterson looks like she could be muted. Jim Lister?
Here.
Okay, no response from Viv Patterson. Okay, thank you.
Of apologies from Steph and Barbara.
Okay.
And Sharon said she might be a little bit late.
Okay. Obviously Sharon hasn't arrived yet, so she'll not, not coming. Sorry Stephanie's not here, I'm afraid to say she's not very well today. We had to get the doctor to her this afternoon, but it isn't Covid related, so that's a blessing. We're also having attendance tonight, representative from United Utilities, Ian McCoy. Is that right Ian?
That's correct, good evening.
Good evening Ian, thank you for attending. The reason we've asked you to attend tonight is just for a little bit of discussion and an update about the water quality in Supply in Aspatia. We believe that several people have suggested that it isn't what it used to be. I don't know where that comes from, has anyone, any councillor got a comment to say on that?
Chair, I guess that will have to be coordinated towards me because it originated from myself and a few members on the streets. It's just to clarify a few points, if you don't mind, I've got some bullet points down if that works for you Ian.
Yeah, sure.
So initially I was completely in the blind on this, predominantly because our own personal water supply is filtered up main, so it's like, oh, okay, so there's an issue. It's about the chlorine levels that they're noticing in a hot drink, hot drinks water, and also when residents are having a shower and set bath. They're noticing an increasing chlorine levels, so they say. But I'm aware that obviously when the water is heated up, it does release the chlorine into the atmosphere, I totally understand that. And also that United Utilities and any other supplier by law have to treat the water. I'm also aware that from my own understanding, it's not Enidale that we actually get the supplies from Chapel House reservoir. If that's correct, no?
No, it's not.
No, you can enlighten us on that one as well.
Sam, Google.
So yeah, I'll fill you in on that, is there anything else that you wanted to, is that, is that the salient points or?
The three main parts are, you know, where do we get our water source? Because clearly I've got that one wrong, so I can enlighten the residents on that one following the conversation. Secondly, how closest treatment works, and also why they're noticing now than, you know, in previous years, an increase. So they claim in chlorine levels.
So let's go through first of all where your water comes from. So Aspatia is one of the areas in West Cumbria where you can get it from two locations. So you can either get it from crummock water. Or, and you haven't got this supply at the moment, you have at some points in the past, but you can also get your water from a mix of Chapel House and borehole water. Now, historically, I mean, you've received that water supply for well over 20 years. It's been, it's been a long period of time. And at times the water has come from the Chapel House reservoir, but for the last few years, it's all come from crummock water. So it comes from crummock water and yeah, then travels all the way around to you. Obviously, your water's going to change in the next year or so when the new water treatment works comes online. Because we've got to cease abstraction from Chapel House and overwater, and also from crummock water. So in the future, your water will be coming from Thelme. We'll be coming, speaking to yourselves, once we've got some more firm plans about what's actually happening with that. But at the moment, your water comes from crummock. Questions about chlorine? We have minimum standards that we've got to achieve at a customer's tap to make sure that the water's safe and all the bugs have been killed. So we always have to make sure we achieve that and the DWI constantly monitors for it. One thing that could be happening is demands aren't as great at the moment. Due to Covid, although we've had hot summers, there's no tourists at the moment, there's very few visitors coming into the areas. So the turnover of the water may be slightly less at the moment. Which could mean that the water, the chlorine in the water is, isn't disappearing as fast as it should. Because the water's not moving as fast. So it could be that that's the change. Because I've asked the question today of our production manager, has the chlorine levels changed? And we've been reassured that they haven't been changed at all. I think people are becoming more aware of the water and changes in the water. I think West Cumbria particularly, because of what's gone on down at Enidale and we introduced the borehole water down at Enidale. And people, people have picked up on it and are becoming more aware of not only where the water comes from, but what it actually tastes like and what they're receiving. So if people have got problems or people aren't happy, it's always worth them giving us a call. It's always worth getting your water checked, just in case there's something not quite right. Because sometimes there are, not always with us, sometimes there's misconnections in people's properties and things like that, where things have been put in wrong or they're getting, in some instances, back flushing back into your water system from things like your washing machines. And what you'd call fittings contraventions, but obviously not done deliberately. So there could be things like that and we'd always encourage people if they're not happy to, to put their minds at rest and give us a call. But nothing has changed. We will say to people as well, if you don't like the taste of the water, if you stick it in the fridge for a few minutes in a jug with the lid off, the chlorine will just completely disappear. And yeah, you won't be able to, to smell it or taste it as much. So I think that's kind of, a bit really. Yeah, is there anything else that you'd like me to pick up on? Have I missed anything at all?
No, it's just the, obviously you mentioned that the, it's going to be changing over the next, you know, period of time to the new supply and the likes. They're asking where does the, how close current treatment works is.
The closest is probably, will be Quarry Hill, Bolton Gate.
Quarry Hill. Because I know I'm going to get asked this tomorrow.
Yeah, so Chapel House and that area is your closest supply, but you're, you see the water from crummock water.
True. Super, well, thank you very much.
Ian, can I ask you a question please?
Of course you can.
There's a development going on, an expansion development down beside the railway line to do United Utilities. What is that and is it anywhere near completion?
Development by the railway line? I am not sure what's going on to be honest. I know it works up at Dairam at the moment, but I don't know of anything up in Aspatia.
Is it a water treatment plant? Like a sewage?
In Aspatia itself?
Yeah.
I am not sure to be honest, I don't know the details of any single project we've got in the area.
It's down the bottom of Cumbly Bank. That's right.
Can I look into it and get back to you?
Yes, please.
Okay.
The question is, what is it? And how much longer will the work take? Because I believe when it first started off, obviously Covid's probably restricted the, the time scale. But we, I think we were led to believe it should be completed by now, now it might be, I don't know. But does, we would just like to know what's happening there and how will that benefit the people of Aspatia please?
Okay, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to think because we've got the new, the new reservoirs that have been built on the A595. For the new, the whole new water treatment works as well, which is being built down by Blind Crake, Red Main sort of way. But I'm not aware of anything else at the moment, so if you, let me go and have a look and I'll come back to you.
Thank you Ian.
No problem.
Has anyone else got any questions for, for Ian?
Can I just say that at the bottom of Cumbly Bank, it's the filter beds. And now it says, where they're working at, it's filter beds.
Right, there may be some improvement work going on that I'm not aware of at the moment, so I'll find out what we're doing and I'll let you know.
Thank you.
If anything else comes up, you've got my email address. And, and that's not, not just on this matter, if there's anything else at all that comes up. No matter how small the questions, yeah, please feel free to come back to me. And I'd like to come back and see you probably in the summer now to explain about the next steps with, with bringing the new water supplies online as well. If that's okay?
Thank you. Does anybody else got any questions for Ian?
I would just like to ask something.
Okay.
Ian probably can't, can't reply to this one Ian, but I was just really going to ask when you expect to get the new Rhyde Kirk plant up and running, you know, and all the, all the pipelines presumably they'll all have to be flushed out and it'll be quite carry on to get everything done. You know, is it expected to be this year or next year?
Hey, we, so we've got a, we've got a regulatory date to have it complete by March of next year. We're actually flushing the mains at the moment as we speak, so everything in terms of all the mains is all in the ground now. We're just finishing some above ground kiosks and other bits and bobs with it. But at the moment, I know we did a kilometre of flushing last week. We've got 96 kilometres in total to go, but there's multiple gangs starting working on it at the moment. We're expecting in about four or five months to have all of the flushing done. And then it's a case of starting to work to get the water from Thelme to think about starting to commission the works. I'd expect us to be trying to get water into supply back end of this year, maybe October, November sort of time. I'd be when we're starting to bring supplies online now, I don't know which areas it'll be first. Because it'll be a natural closure of the existing water treatment works and the areas that are supplied by them. So I'll give you some more detail when I come and speak to you in the summer about that. But I'm still expecting everything to be done before Easter next year.
Thanks very much for that. I was also wondering, was the whole project on, on budget? Do you know? Or is that, is that information that you're not allowed to pass on?
No, no, it was a £300 million project and we're still expecting to deliver it at £300 million.
Thanks very much.
No problem.
Thank you. Is that it for Ian and everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, can I, can I thank you for attending this evening and thank you for your comments on behalf of the council and the people of Aspatia?
Thank you very much.
Okay, I mean, obviously if you wish to leave the meeting now, you can do so because the rest of it doesn't really appertain to yourself.
I've got another parish council at eight o'clock, so I'll.
Oh, that's fine. Okay, thank you for your attendance.
Yes, take care.
Bye bye now. Right, everybody, carrying on with the agenda, the next one on the agenda is the deputy mayor's announcements and updates. Well, to be quite honest with you, I have nothing specific because everything I do wish to say is further on in the agenda. So as I said, I think we'll just move on to any declarations of interest. None of those?
No.
Okay, thank you. Can we now move on to the minutes of the last council meeting held on the 16th of February? Is anyone glad that those minutes are correct?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Mr Chair, Mr Chair, can I, can I just say to Jim that the potholes that I reported at the last meeting, and I reported them at half past seven, quarter to eight on the Tuesday night. And by lunchtime on the Wednesday, they'd been filled in, so I think they've done a great job there Jim. All done in 12 hours.
Thank you very much for that Alan, it is nice when something gets done.
Alan, are you meaning the ones on Brayton Road?
Yes, the ones I reported at the meeting.
Yeah, thank you very much for that, thank you. Is any other matters arising from the minutes? Can we now move on to the police report? I think Claire's distributed quite a number of documents. I don't know, I assume everybody's possibly looked at these and if you have to, have you any comments on them at all? I've got four total documents here. Are we okay to accept the police reports?
Well, I'd like to just comment on them and just saying that you don't seem to be much of a police report apart from, you know, bulletins on Covid.
Yeah.
Don't report how many crimes have been committed, how many crimes have been solved or anything like that. So, you know, as usual, and I'll get on to my normal soapbox, that we think police perhaps have been nothing.
I mean, we're looking at them, they do report the odd incidents. The odd incidents, not many.
Yeah.
But I see where Kevin's coming from.
Yeah. Not like the reports we used to get.
That's true, that's true.
I've got, I've got to support Kevin on this because I'm of the same opinion. It's a general community type of report that we're getting. But in the past, we were told how many burglaries or damage to properties or on a monthly basis. And now we don't, we don't know, we don't know what's happened, what's been done about it.
Used to get a proper breakdown, what was going on. Nowadays, I'd say Alan.
Yeah, which was specific to Aspatia.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah. Claire, could you maybe contact them and ask them if possible in the future to give us an interpretation of what's going on in Aspatia and not places like Carlisle and Workington and Whitehaven? I think we are more concerned with Aspatia, although we do like to know what's happening in the vicinity. Could you do that please Claire?
For years and years and years, we've got a police report informing us of antisocial behaviour, damage to cars and whatever in our own town. And, and, and you know, and what was done about it. But we're not, we're not hearing anything now. We don't know, and I mean, what's the point in us having these reports about Covid like they are in importance, Covid and somebody in Carlisle being jailed for drugs? We want to know what's happening in Aspatia. That's what we are, Aspatia Town Council.
In the meantime, do you still want to get the print offs of the Covid report or shall I put those on hold for now?
I think, my opinion is we put them on hold because I mean, it's what's happened in the past, it isn't what's happening, you know, it's, it's water under the bridge really, those Covid reports.
I support that. I support that, yes.
Yeah. Okay, public participation, it doesn't look like we've got any this evening.
Just a minute, just a minute, Mr Chair.
Certainly Alan.
We haven't got the public, but we have a letter that obviously the person, there's no signature, but the person who has wrote it would have been if it had been the council meeting made, and it's all to do with the roads and the traffic and that down on Ackable Road.
Yes, we do have that letter. It basically states.
That's on the agenda under schedule of correspondence and notices received later on.
That's later on, okay.
Is it on that, I apologise.
It's okay Alan, that's fine, that's fine. If we go back to the last meeting, we had some, let's say, oddball representation who we didn't really know who it was. Now Claire, Claire contacted Calca about this and what was their response? What was the correct way of doing things Claire?
Sorry, I'm just unmuting again. So what we do at the moment is when the public agenda goes out on the notice boards and on the website, there's a little section at the top that says, if you want to attend the meeting, contact the clerk and the clerk will send out the login details and that is fine, that's acceptable. Some people do it different, some people live stream and I think we've seen on the internet how that can turn out. I don't know how comfortable you guys are about potentially there being somebody else in the room, so to speak. Before the meeting and personally, it's not my decision, but my opinion. Keep everybody still and make sure.
We're getting foreign air in today.
Sorry Claire, we're getting this thing through this again. Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry Claire, could you repeat what you said please, we have a lot of interference.
Just how we do it, how we publicise, how the meetings are happening and asking people to contact the clerk is acceptable and is a way to carry on.
So what we're saying, the way we do it is the preferred way, like.
Yeah. Can we just please stop that, that down noise once and for all?
Can we just hold please Kevin? Can we just hold again, I don't know where this interference is coming from.
To be honest, if we can't cure it, then there's no point in having a meeting because none of us can hear it.
Correct Kevin. Correct. It seems to have stopped, Mike, you want to say something?
Say it again.
Yeah, thanks Chair, I've got the master feed, it's, sorry Marie, it is your microphone that's causing the interference I'm afraid.
What do you want me to do? No.
If Marie wants to speak, just I will unmute at that point and then we'll take it from there.
So Marie, if you wish to speak and you put your hand up please.
Yeah? Right, I'm ready to speak now. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you, yeah.
Can we hear you now? Right, well, I wanted to come in on the public participation. Right? Now then, there's a rubbish bin at the bus stop on Queen Street and it's broken and the happy tidies the black bag. So that made a new bin. Right?
Marie.
Have you heard that?
Marie, I'm.
Can he hear?
Just Marie, it just keeps breaking up.
No.
Is Marie muted now Mike? Hello? She's muted.
Can he hear now?
Yes. Marie.
Come here.
Marie, it isn't a question of area, it's interference. There's an interference overriding your voice.
Oh, right, well I don't know what that is. No, mine, carry on, forget about it. Just forget about it, I'll just miss them.
Mike, if we, if you mute Marie, will that solve the problem? It does. So can, can you hear us Marie? Put your hand up if you can hear us Marie. You can, okay, right then, you're now muted, so we can't hear you. So you wish to speak? Do you wish to speak now Marie? We're losing the fighting battle here. I mean, she's talking and she thinks we can hear what she's saying, but we can't because she's muted. I'm sorry, but I think we need to carry on, does everybody agree, agree with us carry on?
We have no option, Mr Chair.
Yeah, great, I'm sorry about this, but I mean, if, if there's a problem, we need to continue with the meeting. Can we now move on please Sharon to Sharon with the financial matters?
Hello.
Hi Sharon.
Right, the February schedule. We've got a spend on there of £8,563.77. I think I've spoke about this invoice in the past, it was the Nicholson's Cumbria call, but it's Nicholson's and it was tending the lights and fitting the defib unit. Income, majority of the income is from allotment. Majority of the. Majority of the income was from the allotments and we've got a little VAT refund there that I claimed back. Just to let you know about the allotments Claire, I've got a couple of agreements that's been posted to me. I should have passed them on to you today actually, had I remembered. But according to my records, we've had quite a good payment. And the only one, this was as at lunch, as at tea time tonight, so if someone's paid in the meantime, I won't have picked it up. The only one on Outgang that was outstanding is plot nine, is that Abraham, Abram, Abram?
I'll, I'll share that, I'll have a word with that.
Because I think Claire's already sent some, some notes out as well though Alan, but if you can twist arms as well, that's great.
I'll have a word with both of them.
And then there's two on Lawson. There's plot 12, is that still Stacey Burkett? Plot 12 and plot 31 is N Brown and I think every year we always have a late payment off N Brown.
Yeah, I'll get, I'll get these, I'll get that.
Great stuff. And then I think there's, are we going to let plot 7A on Lawson? That, it's gone yet, so I haven't received any income or anything regarding plot, plot 7A, I guess that's in the pipeline, is it Claire?
Yeah, the Tennessee agreement got put through the door today, they viewed the plot yesterday, so hopefully this week we should have something with that.
Who's got that Claire?
It was the next person on the list, it was Mr Wardle, Kevin Wardle.
From where?
22 St Mungos.
Well, that's okay.
So surprisingly, we've done quite well, I think. Yeah, so has anybody got any questions regarding the schedule?
I've got a question, but it's not about that and I'll ask you when you've finished your bits and pieces Sharon.
You'll, you'll ask me later, did you say, sorry?
I'll wait till you've finished and I'll ask the question I've got, but it's not to do with the schedule at the moment.
Okay, okay. Alan, you asked about, and I thought I'd responded, I hadn't, about the moor. We haven't had any previous expenditure on the big moor, it's all been, the expenditure we've had, have we got a smaller moor? And the expenditure we've had, I think. And the expenditure we've had, I think, has been on the smaller moor, the, like, fixing belts and general maintenance of it, so, yeah.
Sharon, there's actual item on the agenda about the moor.
Right, okay.
To let people know about later on, so we'll talk about the bill for the big moor when we do that part. Thank you.
Okay. The bank rec, we had as at the end of February, £29,949.62 in our current account, and we've still got the £49,005.38 in our deposit. And then when we take off some outstanding cheques to do with the Christmas power, we've got £78,864 in our bank accounts. Has anyone got any questions regarding bank?
Yeah, I've got a couple of things, please, Sharon. Looking at the printout- Sorry?
Like a payment-
Looking at the printout from the Cumberland. There's three figures on there. There's one, it says in the description, 00217. I assume that's a cheque for £26.
That'll be the Christmas power, yeah.
And there's one for 002156 for £23.
That'll be the Christmas power.
But they're not shown on the account schedule for February.
Oh, because they're outstanding cheques. I account for them when I raise them, so they'll have been back in December, January time. They'll have been accounted for in that schedule, because it's when the expenditure, kind of, when I write the cheque. So anything that I raise in a cheque goes in the month that I raise the cheque, and then as it goes through the bank, I knock it off. It's an outstanding cheque, and then I knock it off the outstanding cheques, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's just one other one, towards the bottom of the first page, on the 22nd of February, the description is Lawson Street allotments.
Yeah.
There was an outgoing of £560. What does that cover, please?
That's our standing order. We pay £560 twice a year for the, do we rent the allotments off someone?
We rent the allotments, Sharon, we rent them, and that's what it is.
Okay, Alan, yeah, okay. Thank you, Alan, I wasn't aware of that. Thank you very much indeed. Is anyone else? Kevin?
Yeah.
You had something to raise to Sharon, please?
Well, there was. I mean, I suppose a lot of us, well, sat down when we received our council bill this year, when we got it the other day. Now, what I'm querying is, is that the County Council, Allardale, and even the police kept the 2%. I looked back through the minutes. January, we agreed a 3% rise in our precept. What's actually showing on the council tax bill is 4.3%.
It's not, you can't, there's no direct correlation between us and your bill, because the bill takes into account lots of other things.
No, it says a spatriot, 4.3. I thought we'd agreed on 3.
No, I've raised it by 3, so I don't know where that's come from.
4.3 on my bill, you know, and it's, so that's showing, as a town, we're getting, you know, we're asking for double what everybody else is asking for. And it's not to be neighbours and a couple more, it's what the hell kind of thing, you know?
I don't know why that's shown, because it's raised-
It's challenging it, why are they showing you 4.3?
They must have added something else on, but I'm not sure. I have nothing to do with what they do at their side, but I've definitely raised our precept by 3%.
Well, maybe you need to challenge, and Jim, if you're listening, I think we need to look at that as well. As if we said 3, and all of a sudden it's 4.3, there's something wrong.
Can I come in here, Chair?
Yes, please, Jim, thank you.
Yeah, I've put my hand up a bit since. The computers usually work an awful lot better if everybody is on mute, apart from the person that's talking. We find that we get much, far, far less interference. Anyway, as regards the council tax, Allardale's put theirs up by nearly 2%. County Council's put theirs up by over 4%, and then there's the Police and Crime Commissioner, and they put theirs up quite a bit as well. So the largest part is the County Council, one, which is 4%, and that is the largest part, or largest share of your council tax. So that's why it looks like such a large number. Maybe, it's maybe not the time to mention it, but it's just that the County Council are building up their reserves, for what reason, we're not quite sure. They've put an extra £10 million into reserves, and so they're raising money from the council taxpayer, whereas within Allardale, we're actually having to raid our reserves to balance our budget. And the Police and Crime Commissioner, presumably he has more police officers to pay for. Okay.
Does that help, Kevin?
Yeah, okay. The only last bit I've got is some bills just to run by you, and you're going to be shocked at one of them, try not to be. So I've got Eon electricity of £5.64, that's just some additional charge for the seasonal lighting. We normally get that as a one-off each year. There's the £205.60 from Brayton Services for the van, part of its maintenance and its MOT for the year. Cumbria Pest Control, we've got our £132 for the quarter, April to June. Spatriot Farmers, Michael's gone berserk this month and spent £4.20. We've got a bill from Mike for our Zoom subscription of £12.23. We're using Grow Green, and we've ordered some lawn sand and maintenance stuff from them, and that comes to £276. Right, and then the shocker of all shockers, and I actually rang Eon to speak to them, and I get what the girl is actually saying. We've switched suppliers, as you know, it was agreed at a previous meeting, and they've finally got round to doing a final metre reading. Now, we were already in quite a big deficit with these guys, and they weren't, they were underestimating the usage because they couldn't read the metres, they had a problem with the device that reads the metre. So they whacked our direct debit up, and then they put it back down, and I rang them at the time and says, "Why are you putting it back down when we've got a big deficit?" And she says, "Oh, well, your summer bill, and you won't use, you know, electricity during the summer, and it equals out", and I thought, oh, fair enough. Anyway, when we supplied between new supplier and old supplier, the final metre readings, we actually owe Eon, and they've actually taken it out of the bank as a direct debit, because they do, we did pay by direct debit, £529.90 as the final bill. So I think initially, when we started with this, it was something like nearly £800 in deficit. So, yeah, it could have been worse, but when I opened this letter, I did take a sharp and take a breath and thought, what the heck is this? Rang them, and then when the girl explained, I thought, well, yeah, she's sort of saying, we're not getting the benefit of the under-usage during summer. And I was saying, well, what about Covid and things like that? But the metre readings are what the metre readings are, and that's the amount that was outstanding for that final bill. So unfortunately, we've had to pay that. Yeah. Are you happy to approve those payments? I will list them.
I agree to it. Does anybody else second that? Yeah, Kevin seconded, Sharon.
Thank you.
Just one question, Sharon. On the minutes of the last meeting, it states that you were going to look into payments from the wind turbine farm.
Yes, yes, I've spoken to a guy, well, I've spoken to him and I've emailed him, because it suddenly dawned on me that he could have the wrong bank details, because did make change from the community funding to our bank account. So I've spoken to the guy, it was Rob, is it Rob? I can't remember his name. I had to supply the new bank details and a letter, as well as a copy of the bank statement showing our new bank. And he's come back, confirmed it, and he's happy, and he says we should receive a payment at the end of the month.
Do you know how much that payment is, Sharon?
I don't, he says, I think he said £2,000 and something. He was actually, he needs, he was going to produce a schedule for me, because I wanted a schedule of what we've been paid. I'm still waiting for that.
Okay, so that sounds as though it's imminent.
Yes, yeah.
That's fine. Okay, thank you. Is anyone any questions for Sharon? No, everybody's quiet chatting, so thank you very much for that. Thank you very much indeed. Can we now move on to the highways? Has everyone seen the report? Is anyone any comments on the outstanding items for the highways? I mean, Alan's already mentioned about the potholes in Brayton Road being filled in, which we thank Allardale for doing promptly. There is a couple of things on here, which I think Claire's been involved with to a certain extent.
County Council do the roads, Chair.
Oh, sorry, they do, Jim, yeah, sorry. Thank you for correcting me there, that's right. Speed indicator devices at both ends of the town. Now, it looks like they've agreed to go ahead with those, but, and here's the but, if I'm reading this right, Claire, they're wanting us to make a contribution to these. And everybody's sitting down, they're estimating the cost of works between £5,000 and £10,000 per unit. Now, but they haven't told us, if they wish to install those, what our contribution will be. Have you anything to add to that, Claire? Am I reading this correctly?
Yeah, so the communication that I've had with a lady called Stephanie, I think the reasoning is, because there's never actually been a collision, and there hasn't been an accident as such, that, and the budget that they have for this year is already allocated. They were asking if we basically had any spare cash. We would like to chuck their way to contribute towards putting in these, the SIDS. And it's positive in a way that they've actually agreed that they're going to put these lights, you know, that it's something that can go forward. It's about the only measure that we really can put in on that road, because it's an air road, we can't put in speed bumps or chicanes or anything else to slow down the traffic. So the way I'm reading it is that these SIDS are the only really realistic way forward for traffic calming. And, yeah, they've spent the budget this year already, they're asking if we've got anything we can contribute towards the cost. And as you say, Alan, they're estimating it as between £5,000 and £10,000 at each site, so they're looking at top end of West Street and down by the business park as well.
It's not only, isn't it?
What we should be doing is pushing them to get it on the budget for next year, and we have first chance at it, kind of thing.
And the new year will start in April.
Yeah, that's right, Jim, yeah.
We need to push and get it out of the top of the list, yeah.
Could you look into that, Claire?
I'll mention it as well.
That she wasn't referring to the budget for the year coming. I think she might have been, I think she might have been talking 21, 22, rather than the year end that we're coming up to now. But, yeah, I'll certainly make inquiries as to whether we can go to the top of the list when the new budget comes in, whether that's 22.
Getting first, we might stand a chance, Mike, with-
Chair.
Okay, Alan.
Chair.
Yes, Alan.
What I've just, what I've just listened to from Claire is exactly, practically word for word, to the claim that we had some years ago for pedestrian crossings at the bottom of Richmond Hills School. And the present, the present chairman of Allardale was our county council representative at that time. And that, when we were pushed, we had meetings, we discussed it, and the answer was exactly the same, practically the same as what Claire said. It would cost us, I don't know how many thousand pounds, to get them installed, and then we would have to contribute to the maintenance and electric and everything. I can tell you, and I don't have to educate the councils, I know that, but to pay that type of money, for the rastin, or even, you know, 50% of that, it isn't going to reward the town in any way. The 30 mile an hour signs at entrance to the town is to inform traffic that that's the limit, the speed limit. Now, no matter how many signs, if they're going to go flying up to the town at 50 mile an hour, no matter how many signs you have at the beginning of the town, it won't make a difference. It's a question of catching offenders and penalising them, not putting lights up. As much, I would like to think that if you put a light up, that it would make a difference, but it won't. It wouldn't make a difference. And so I don't agree in any way to contributing money towards these lights, not at all, waste of time. But as I repeat, it's just exactly the same argument as we got for the pedestrian crossing for the children at Richmond Hill.
Alan, I-
Jim, carry on, please, Jim.
Yeah, I'm sort of mooted, and I think I've mentioned it before, to try and get the speed limit moved at West End to the other side of Castlemont, and so that any traffic that pops over the brow of the hill that is doing over 30 miles an hour will not be aware of a police vehicle, and that they will get clocked. Whereas at the moment, you see, they can still be doing over 30 miles an hour when they come in view of the road to Hayton. And I thought that might be quite useful if that happened. And I mean, it's just a matter of moving the 30 mile an hour, 50 metres or so, but then the speed indicator vehicle, you know, a camera could catch people speeding as they come into the town.
I support that, Jim. Yeah, fully supported. As well as speed indicator devices, has it been intimated about a traffic survey along by Victoria Park? Is that right, Claire? Because you asked if there's been one done previously, and when it was done? Claire?
Sorry, I'm just unmuting, finding the button to switch myself back on and off again. That's all right. So they were querying about having a traffic survey done down by Victoria Park, and I think it was just a little bit of confusion whether that was on the road that we're discussing. So they've done the survey at that point of the traffic survey, and they found that the data that they've got on the speed of the traffic is enough to say, yes, you can put these SIDS in place. I take your point, Alan, about the catching people speeding, but the way the police do it is they advertise where the van's going to be. It will go up on the police's, on the social media, on the website, and they'll say, "The van that is going to catch the speed is going to be at a spatriot today", and people stop speeding that day. So I take your point that catching people and fining them, to me, that's, yeah, that's the way that you're going to reduce speeding, but it's not happening. And I think that has led us to pursue this avenue of asking for the SIDS to be put in place. And I'm also wondering, if they have them in Plumland, is it worth maybe asking Plumland Parish Council, since they've had them installed? Have they seen any difference to the speed of traffic going through the village? Asking them if it's, if they've seen any benefit from it?
Claire, we in a spatriot has had these. One was positioned in front of the church, just between the church and the old chemist, and it was looked after by councillor Wendy, there was a councillor at the time. But we've had them in the town, but they were in the town, not on the outskirts of the town, in the town. in the town. And Plumland, it was actually Plumland where we got the idea. But it didn't last. It didn't last long, but it worked. But it was in the town, not on the outskirts.
So do you think, Alan, that it's the... I think our reasoning so far, from what I can work out, is having the lights at either end of the town is catching the traffic as they're coming in and getting it to slow down? Are you saying that you think it would be better to have one in the centre of the town?
These that we had a few years back were mobile. They weren't a fixture. They weren't a fixture, you know. And we had them for so long, then they went somewhere else and then maybe came back here. But that's a few years ago, but that's where the... But they weren't a fixture. So am I right in assuming that the speed indicator devices do not, to a certain degree, do not stop people from speeding? Because at the end of the day, they just tell them what speed they're doing. It's not as if they're on camera and then, of course, they'll have a conviction. And as Alan says, like, they won't stop people speeding at all. They just tell them what speed they're doing. And when we did mention about being contacted by PC Leon Pettit about speed camera training. Now, I don't know what that training, you know, what does it do? At the end of the day, if six of us get speed camera training, does that mean the information we get just goes into another black hole? Or can the police take action on what they find on those speed cameras? We do not know. We, Mr Chairman, we already had that some years ago in the town. It appears that people forget, we had that in the town. And there was two people at the time. One had the speed indicator and the other had a book and wrote down the registration and the speed that the car, the wagon was doing. And then it was reported, but the police then just gave a warning to whoever the offender was. But we've actually done that some years ago in the town. Where we had two people, and there was two ladies, we had to chest them in. They would have been there 24 hours a day. But we've tried that. You know, so I mean, if you want to do it again, but it doesn't find anybody, just tells them we're aware that you were speeding through a spate here. But it could be looked upon as a deterrent? Be looked upon as a deterrent. Yeah, yeah. I mean, the best example, Mr Chairman, and everyone will have seen it, and Jim will have passed it practically every day, was the policeman at the miners' arms at Prospect. Yeah, yeah. It worked for a long time, until, you know, it was there just a little bit too long, but it worked for a while. Okay, just mentioning the speed cam. Sorry, Mr Chairman, if I may, can we... Jim made a suggestion which I supported. We've got to move on the 30 mile an hour sign. Now, I mean, I'm asking the council to support what Jim said and see if he can get that done. Kevin, you agree? I agree with that, if possible, yeah. Could Jim possibly look into that on our council's behalf?
I've sort of set the ball in motion.
Okay, Jim, that's fine. That's fine. Thank you. Okay. Has anyone else anything to say on this matter before we move on? No? Okay, thank you. It's over to you now, Jim, for any information.
Sorry, Alan, I had my hand up there.
Sorry, Claire.
Are we not pursuing the SIDS then? Is that on ice?
Well, I tend to agree with what Alan Rea is saying, and I think possibly, if everybody else agrees what you've just said there, Claire, should happen, put them on ice. Because why spend a lot of money to get no benefit?
We've been asking for them for months. I feel like we've been asking for them. And now they've said, we can have them. We're going to turn around and say, oh, we don't want them. I'm just a bit confused.
Claire, I've got to correct you. We've been asking for them, but we weren't asking for a £24,000 bill.
No, and that's not what they're asking for. They're asking for a donation. Are we not in a position where we can say, turn around and say we don't actually have any money?
Kevin, you wish to say something?
Well, offer my tenner. If you take it, fine, you won't bother.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, don't tell them how much money you've got.
No.
Exactly.
If we do want to improve the town for the people of the spate, the thing that everybody consistently has issues with is the traffic. And we have an opportunity here to be seen to do something and I don't know. I don't know if it's worth maybe saying. I don't know. I don't know. It's your decision. I just don't know how you want me to proceed with it.
Well, with the traffic, we sat down with them, paid, we sat down with the County Council, we have spent hours of our time, we never get back. Over logging wagons and wagons, etc, through the town. And absolutely zero has happened. So I don't think the SIDS will make that a difference, to be quite honest.
I don't understand.
The only thing I think which will deter people is what Jim said. Move the 30 limit and whap a speed camera in there. And then when people start getting £100 fines and three points on the licence, the message will get out. Otherwise, slaps on the wrist, a complete waste of time.
Couldn't agree more. Support that entirely.
Thank you.
So we're now saying that the SIDS are on the back burner. We're not going to go ahead with them.
I don't think point.
Yeah. Sorry, Claire, it looks... Sorry about that, Claire. Okay, I think we've now made the decision on that. So can we now move on to information from Councillor Jim Lister, please?
Yeah, just on that last point, Claire. I'll keep on pursuing it. Maybe if we find out what the Plumland ones cost. And as I say, if it's going to be too expensive and they're going to make us pay an awful lot of it, then maybe we don't do it. But I don't think we should completely kick it into the long grass. Anyway, I'll put my camera on so you can see that I'm actually here and see how good looking I am. Just before Viv copies too much down, how many tonnes of stone did I say we're going to put in at Cross Cannaby, Viv? I don't think you can read your own shorthand. I said 16,000 tonnes of stone, not 160 tonnes. But anyway. Moving on, the local government reorganisation. I suppose you've heard quite a bit about this. It's fairly important and it'd be very good if you went on to the consultation site, which you can do if you log on to Allardale. And the consultation goes on until about the 1st of April, I think. And so we're wanting a sort of system where we will have an elected mayor. And the reason for this is it gives us, it'll give us more access to money from the national pot. So that's something that I think is fairly important. We had a bit of a bad tempered Allardale full meeting a fortnight ago. But anyway, there's one or two repercussions from that. Because of some really poor behaviour, rather better than you would expect. But anyway, we've got the budget through and Allardale's share is going up by just 2% to 1.99. And as I say, to balance the budget, we've had to raid our reserves, as I said earlier. Something else I did happen to report, I don't know whether anybody else noticed, but the River Allen's been running green. A sort of opaque green colour. So I phoned up the Environment Agency and it took them 35 minutes to answer the phone. And of course, you don't get any feedback from them. But the river has stopped running sort of an opaque green colour. So I presume they found what the problem was. When was it? A week on Saturday, it was particularly bad. And just moving on, I noticed further on in the agenda, there's a mention of garden waste bin problems. Is that the lids coming off or are they not being emptied?
Well, Jim.
Kevin.
I'll say straight up. Thank you for the very prompt thing you did for my next door neighbour. The supervisor from the waste disposal people got in touch with her as well and promised to have a look at it and see what had happened. So I was just pointing it there as an agenda item, just to, you know, say thanks to Alan. Thanks to yourself for sorting it out. Just saying also that, has anybody else experiencing this problem? I mean, the laughable part about it was that the rubbish they put into the green waste was my rubbish and I could tell it straight away. But thanks again for very prompt action.
Yeah, that's okay. I mean, we've got pretty good managers. I mean, the boys on the ground, obviously, try to make their job as quick and easy as they possibly can. That's just human nature. But we are, I hope that this doesn't sound too big headed, but we're quite proud of the way the job's running. But obviously, if there is something wrong, we really want to know and then we can get it sorted out. And usually, we can get things sorted out pretty swiftly.
Yes, thank you for that. I mean, it was just inappropriate behaviour and I hope that the supervisor, when he finds out who it is, takes the necessary action. You know, and literally cleans that guy's windscreen. The behaviour isn't palatable by anybody.
If there isn't anything else, Chair, I'll go and get my supper now. Go and get the tea.
Thank you for that.
All right.
Thank you for attending. Thank you. Thank you. Nice, Jim. Moving on to the Viking ship. Eventually, we got an eight page document from Allardale as a licence, which I've signed and returned to them possibly a couple of weeks ago. And I assume everything's now in place. Kevin Foy, Mike Blair, Shane Buchanan and myself met on Queen Street Car Park to have a look at the site where the work's going to be done. And Kevin took the lead and explained to Shane what the requirements were. And Shane has since sent in a quotation. There was one point that we all noticed was the, there's a sign in the site where we're going to put the actual Viking ship that basically says it's a no entry sign on a pole. And the pole is basically going to fall apart very shortly. So Claire has been on to a guy called, I think it's Alan Hutton at Allardale. And he was going to put a new pole in last weekend, but for some reason he couldn't. So he's going to actually supply to Shane a new pole to actually install when Shane does his work. Is that right, Claire? Okay. The quote we've got from Shane is £1,550. And that is to dig out all the existing shrubs and topsoil, take away, put in sub base, then grit sand, plastic grid, and then put the concrete plinth in and new curbs. My opinion is it is a reasonably good price. I've also been in touch with David Watson about making the Viking ship and I've asked him to get on with it. And he's told me that he will actually give his time free of charge, but will charge us for materials. And I've said to him on behalf of the council, and I think it's all right, we would agree to that. So the question is, can we now give Shane the go ahead to carry on with the works to the sum of £1,550? I know it seems a bit of money initially, but let's remember that this will be there for many years to come.
Alan, can I just ask a quick question?
Certainly.
Just with my audit head on, have we received any quotes from anyone else regarding this work? I'm not saying that it shouldn't be given to Shane, but as part of the audit, Jean tends to look at, because the standing orders will say, you know, I can't remember the exact level of work, but that you should receive three quotes. Unless it's a specialised piece of work that very limited people can do. So it's just kind of being mindful that we don't fall in the trap of just giving work without getting any other quotes, basically.
Darren?
Hello?
How much did Shane price it, charge us for the memorial garden?
Oh, I don't know off the top of my head.
Two or three grand, wasn't it?
Yeah. And at the end of the day, we should, did we get any other quotes for that as well, thinking about it? So it may be that Jean will pick up as part of her audit that we're not getting... However, having said that, did Shane do that work during Covid? During lock, not lockdown, but...
The memorial garden?
Yeah, when was it? Yeah, so it, maybe we can use the excuse that people didn't respond to written requests and things like that. You know, we can kind of get round it and and say that Covid did prevent some things.
I don't think is that, what is our legal requirement to get three quotes over what baseline figure?
I can't remember off the top of my head. I'm going to say, I don't want to say this because it's like sounding like the other... It's in the standing orders.
Are we in breach of some, you know?
We would just get, we're not, we're not, we would just get picked up that we're not complying to our own standing orders.
Well, what our standing orders are, what we get a quote, what is the baseline we get a quote over?
I can't remember if it's 500 or 1,500, to be honest.
Yeah, isn't it? And if our standing orders say 500 or a thousand pounds, then we're in breach of that. We must have got out to three people.
Well, that's what I mean. I think it's worthwhile going out and and as the value of the work gets higher, you've got to do it more, you know, we're not in the levels of procurement or anything like that, but the standing orders cover procurement rules as well. So I think this is three quotes. Now, you might not get three, but as long as you can say, I did try, but they didn't answer, then...
Can I suggest we find two other companies and ask them to provide the quote by the end of the year? Simple as that. I can give you one company who's done a lot, the parish councils, and that's who does some work for me, will probably give you a quote. So that's a deathly silence by everyone, what's up?
Well, I'm just thinking, the intention was to get the Viking ship installed and paid for in this year's budget, not going to next year's.
I agree. But Sharon brought up, do we need to go to three quotes?
Chair, if I may.
Yeah, Jim, Mike, can you say something, please?
Yeah, just not to clarify as such, just if we can remember back to, you know, back in the days of when we were moving from the old clunky website, the hat that I'd created, and we were putting out a tender for quotes on the new one. I remember back in the day, previous clerk Helen put out for three, or minimum of three quotes, just to make it above board. Just as a point of reference.
Okay. So looking at what we're saying tonight is it will be preferable to get three quotes for this work? Okay. Kevin, can you and I liaise and possibly think of two other builders to give us quotations?
Yeah, I can supply one. He's done some work for me. He's very good. He also does a lot of work for other parish councils as well.
Okay.
We're landscaping.
Well, if I speak to you tomorrow, we'll get a quote off that guy and one other. And obviously, we need two more site meetings to get the price and then we'll go with what we consider is the right person. Is that okay?
Yeah, fine by me.
Okay.
I mean, at the end of the day, Alan, sorry, I'm jumping in here. It doesn't have to really be the cheapest quote. So if you're, you know, you can, as long as you can justify why you haven't used the cheapest quote, it might be to do with standard of work. it might be to do with standard of work. So you know Shane, you know that he's good at working, you know what his, you know, his end result's like and you've always never been. So you don't have to go with the cheapest, as long as you've got a justification for that, basically.
And our standing orders align with all your requirements.
Yes, they are for the, yes.
Why?
Yeah.
We're no longer in the EU. So the Journal of Procurement, the European Union should not apply.
We, we go, Calc produce model financial regs and standing orders and we go in line with those. And I think when you're talking, I mean, you're talking about, we're talking about small amounts of work. We've basically just got to be seen to be above board, that we are getting. They don't have to be, you know, you're asking for a quote on a piece of paper. You're not asking, you're not going out to tender or anything like that. It's just making sure that you're being transparent, basically, and offering this work to other people. You're not just using one person all the time.
I agree. That's what the website's for. Tenders, put it on there.
Okay, can we move on? I think what we've now decided is we need two more quotes. We've got Shane's quote. We'll get two more quotes. And as Sharon says, the cheapest isn't always the best because you've got to look at quality of what you're getting for your money. Okay. So we'll get, I'll talk to you Kevin and we'll organise two more quotes between yourself and myself. Is that all right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda, number 13, is the cleaning of the Lawson Monument Braille Lamp. Claire will confirm this. She's contacted Helen about the last cleaning. And as far as Helen could remember, the last cleaning was done before Helen was clerk, and that's over eight year ago. And Claire's contacted David Bryden at Alladale, who could not find any record at all of the monument of ever being cleaned by them. And when you look at the monuments, quite a few, well, quite a few, several people have said to me, it's looking in the state where it needs a blooming good clean. And I think what we need to do now then is if we agree that we are going to have it cleaned, that and the Braille lamp, we need to get three quotations. Does everybody agree with that? Alan, you're on mute. Alan, we can't hear you. You're on mute.
What about that?
Okay, Alan.
I disagree entirely with what you're saying. Alladale, they didn't turn around and say that they have no record of it. I can tell you that I know that it was done and that the Alladale council at that time was David Wilson. And David Wilson pushed it and we got it done. And no matter what they say about the records, they're running after the responsibility. And I don't think that, I do agree with the Braille lamp. That's, that's ours. That's up to us to claim, that's ours. But the monument, and as I said at the last meeting in the area, is Alladale's. The council owns the little garden between the monument and the garage. That's town council. But I don't care. We shouldn't just sit back and allow Alladale to offload onto the town council. It's Alladale's responsibility. They, Alladale done it the last time and we should be pursuing them. Shouldn't, shouldn't just allow them to offload their expense onto the town council. So I, I disagree that we should rush, just because Alladale said that, that we should get three quotes and pay for it ourselves. I totally disagree with that.
Claire, would you mind going back to Alladale and speaking again to Mr Bryden? And could you comment to him what Alan's just said? Referring to the gentleman's name, David Wilson, who looked into the matter the last time it was cleaned, whenever that was, we do not know. It's obviously quite a number of years ago, but Alan's right. I mean, Alan was there when it was probably done through David Wilson. And we need to sort of look into it further. As Alan says, why should we pay for it when it isn't our responsibility? I agree entirely with that, Alan. That is correct. Claire, could you once again contact them and see what response you get from them, please? Thank you. The next item is recording from each meeting to be publicly published on the ATC website. Could you go through this, Claire? Because I know you've looked into this.
So I emailed Calc for a bit more information on that. The advice that came back was don't, if you can avoid it. Again, I know other councils do. I know people, as Jim was saying earlier, that they can live stream them. But a recording of the minutes, if, has, if a clerk makes a recording of the meetings, generally it's deleted once they've used them to type the minutes up. So Chris Shaw, who's my contact at Calc, advised not to publish a recording of the meetings.
That's fine, because what Jim mentioned before was an Alladale meeting that got out of order. Anybody, and I mean anybody who's got YouTube, could actually sit in after obviously on a recording and watch that whole meeting. It was actually on YouTube. And it did get out of order, which as Jim, Jim was at that meeting and as I said, it got out of order. But it was there on YouTube for everybody to see. And it wasn't nice listening to it actually, and it didn't put Alladale in a good light. And I agree with what Claire said there, that the clerks delete the recording once the minutes have been agreed. Is there anybody disagree with that?
No.
No, that's fine then. Moving on to the Kibyoata mower. I'm not going into every detail because I've been at this nearly every day for the last three weeks. We finally got the mower back. It was delivered when Mike wasn't there. Mike went to start it up. The battery was flat. He had to tow it with his other mower into the shed. The oil level was low, the tyres were flat. He had to charge up the battery. Also at the back of the mower, one of the discharge plates was totally rusted through. I actually physically went round to the park and had a look at this with Mike and I phoned Lloyds and spoke to their service lady. And she personally said, well, it can't have happened there. I eventually spoke to the manager of Lloyds, a guy called Mark Dixon. And he agreed, he agreed to replace that plate free of charge. And I said to him, but we do not want the mower leaving a spatia again, because last time we never think we'd ever get it back. He has agreed to fit that plate at the spatia in the park in the attendance of Mike Blair. I spoke to them again today and that is happening tomorrow morning. They're coming tomorrow morning to fit that plate. Mike has used the mower. It works quite well. He's got a slight problem with engaging the actual rotor. And he's going to show the guy tomorrow that, but he has used it and there is no oil leak from it now. So it's been quite a story, me talking to Lloyds on that, but the biggest problem with the Lloyds is the bill. We have received the bill of Lloyds for £1,454.82, which is one heck of a lot of money. I spoke to this Mark Dixon about the bill. And he, because he just says on here, total labour a thousand pound, and then it lists all the parts. But it doesn't give a breakdown of labour. Okay, included in that price is £242.46 of VAT, which means really our bill is £1212.36. I did say it to him that we were very disappointed in the standard of their, of their work. And to us, this was quite a substantial bill. He then said to me, that is a discounted bill. He's already knocked £800 off it.
Oh, for goodness.
Exactly, Alan. Exact, I just shook my head up when I speak to them on the phone. I can't prove or disprove that, but we have a bill for £1212.36. Albeit, when this guy's been tomorrow, we should have a motor, which is a fair age, which is in a usable condition. Now, one thing I didn't ask him and maybe I should, what guarantee do they give on their work? I don't know. Maybe with a machine, eight year olds, there isn't a guarantee, but. I think I spoke to you about this, Alan, to see what your comments were. And at the end of the day, we have a machine there that, to my mind, and I think you mentioned this, Alan, we possibly should keep on using basically until it falls apart. Then look at replacing the machine, either with a new machine or leasing the machine. Has anyone got any comments on what I've said?
Well, the reason is that I said that when I spoke to you, Chair, was that we were spending £12, £1300 on the machine. It wasn't right that we should be going looking for a newer. We should be, we should be getting value of that £12 to £1300. If, if in future the thing, you know, the box in and it's serious, well, we can look at a new one. But we'll be out of order to go purchasing a new machine after spending £1300 on the pair of the existing ones, at the point.
I agree entirely with that, Alan. At the end of the day, this machine might last two or three more years without breaking down, touch wood. So if it does last a couple of years or three years, we've then got maybe a bit of value of that £1200.
Yes.
So are we in agreement that we actually pay this bill?
Well, Chair, have they broken down the thousand pound for labour?
No.
Are they just, still just a figure?
It's just.
Well, I think that, you know, that they should say so many hours at so much per hour.
Yeah, that's right. It just says total labour, £1,000. And then it lists under prices of all the pieces of.
Yes.
I mean, they've even charged us for emery cloth. I mean, crikey me. An O-ring, two, two at 60 pence. You know, it's.
On a £1400 bill, ridiculous.
Alan, did you say it was a thousand pound for labour?
Yes.
Well, if you divide that by a labour hour rate of £20, that's 50 hours.
Yeah.
Would you spend 50 hours on?
No way.
You go to a dealer, firstly, put things down. You'll be paying £80 to £100 an hour for labour.
Oh, good grief.
The last time I saw labour at £20, I had dark hair.
Can I just point out, Kev, you need to stop there because me and Claire are being paid well. You'll have a report at the next meeting.
And what you're. Probably different things bear no resemblance to each other.
Yeah.
Whether you're a car, a caravan, a mower, anything like that, it'd be £80 plus an hour. Look at the fancy showroom that we've got. What are the overheads?
What about only paying the bill once he's obviously done this work and we're, we're really happy? Is it tomorrow he does the work?
He's coming tomorrow between 11 and half past 11 to meet Mike Blair on the park to fit the plate. And Mike wants him to check the machine out before he leaves. To Mike's satisfaction. I've spoken to Mike today about it and he's fully aware of the situation.
And I totally agree with Alan. Let's run it into the ground, then look at finding a new one or a leasing one.
Yeah.
Get our money without it.
Yeah. I mean, my opinion is, once the guy's been tomorrow, I'll have a word with Mike Blair to see if he's satisfied. And then if he is satisfied, my opinion is, I don't know if everybody agrees with this, we should pay this bill and put it to bed and run the mower until it falls apart.
Correct.
Does anybody agree with that?
Yeah.
Okay. As I said, I'll speak to Mike Blair once this guy's been tomorrow then. Thank you for that. Next one is dog fowling in litter. Obviously it's an ongoing problem, this, and I've been stopped in the town. I mean, I've got a little dog, as you all know, and I do pick my, my little dog's poops up. And I've been stopped saying, you pick yours, brother. What can you do about it? Well, what can you do really?
Mr Chair, this is a problem, as you've just said, that's gone on and on for years. It isn't maybe as bad as it used to, but it's still happening. And when Alladale, two, if not three, men employed, dog foul, men. But they can't cover everywhere. So what you've got to do, and this is, this is what they've told council in the past and it's recorded, is that if you are aware of someone who's in the habit, you know, I mean, in front of my house, it's continuous, dogs walking. If you're aware of someone who's in the habit of taking the dog out at eight o'clock at night and not cleaning up after them, you report them and somebody will be there. But they can't be everywhere. So you've got, you know, it's almost impossible. You've got to let Alladale know who's walking where at what time to catch them. It has happened. We have, we have in the past caught someone who was fouling the station road pavement in the area of farmers. And it was reported and they were caught. Another man was caught on Mungo Park. But you've got to, you've got to tell these fellows what time to be there to catch them. And it's almost impossible, but the record in the spatia is that it's worked twice.
So basically the answer, if anybody says what can you do about it is, report it to the authorities and it is then in their hands to sort it out.
Yes. And given, given the authorities as much information, it isn't just that I walked past some dog foul. They need information. And as I say, I think they've got three, three chaps employed for that.
I can say, I can say, you know, I've noticed it a lot more recently, Alan.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I have as well. I mean, I said I walk my little dog around the town and quite honestly with you, the amount is unbelievable at places. And some of them, you wouldn't think it had been dog. You'd think it had been an elephant that had left it on the pavement. I mean, some of them are substantial.
It's always the same at the dark nights. So things, it gets better as the nights lie. But dark nights, people take advantage and don't bother to clean up after them.
That's exactly right.
Not that it's right to do that, but that's what happens.
Okay. So what we're saying is anybody says what can you do about it? Report it to the proper authorities and let's see what they can do to alleviate the problem.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Number 17, landed crookie. Mr Graham's email to request the lease be renewed.
I, I said at the meeting that I would contact Carl, but I was forgetting about this isolation and whatever. So I haven't, I haven't been to his house, but I seen them on the, on the street and they're wanting to keep it, keep it done. So that's up to Claire now to bill them, but they're, they're, they're going to keep it on. Or Sharon to bill them.
I mean, it was, it was a minimal amount of money anyway, wasn't it?
It just, that's what it is. It's, there's no big, no big charge. And I can't remember whether Sharon can find out, but it was just a few, few pounds for 10 years or something like that.
Yeah.
I just forget what it was.
I think Claire maybe knows, but £15 ringing a bell with me.
But that covers a long period, so.
It covered a lot of years, a lot of years.
Was it 10 years, Claire? I can't remember.
It was 10.
10 years. And at the last meeting, it was suggested that maybe that was a little low. And it was to come, to be raised again at future meeting, see if the guy still wanted to rent it and see if we wanted to make an increase in that rent.
Well, I understand what you're saying there, Claire. Well, I understand what you're saying there Claire.
That wasn't my comment, it was what was commented at the last.
Fifteen pound for ten years, if you put a five on, that isn't gonna benefit the council great daily. I mean, it isn't that you, you've got a huge rental or anything, it's, it's a fifteen, five pound over ten years, what's, what's that? I don't see the point in it.
I think we were looking, we mentioned last time, because it was when we were raising the allotment rents and then we said, well. We were saying about size comparison and stuff like that, is it? But Claire's right, it said it would come back to a future meeting to decide if it did, whether that amount was reasonable.
Well, I, I, I suggest, I mean, the whole idea of it in the first place was just that we kept, we wouldn't sell. We were keeping all of, all of the land and it was just, it just. An amount that somebody thought on and. And I, I agree, I don't see the point in putting up a few, few pounder. Or if you, if you do it on the allotments, you've got thirty odd allotments and, and, and it amounts up, but just a little. It's not that big, it's just a little bit of ground there and it's just really, we're just charging to keep all of it.
So can I propose then that. This is renewed at the same price as it was for the same period of time?
I, I propose that.
Yeah. Kevin, you agree? Okay, can we do that then please Claire? The next item is the bus shelters on Hariston Road. And it was agreed that both shelters were going to be removed, but a bench at approximately four hundred pound would be installed. But is that not until the next financial year?
Yeah, I think we budgeted for next financial, from here onwards, yeah.
Okay, so that, that's ongoing as, as for the next financial year, okay? It mentions here bowling club fees.
Can I, can I come in there Mister Chairman?
Of course you can.
This is something that I keep saying, that always came before the park and allotments committee. And two, three weeks ago, the treasurer of the bowling club rang me. Because they wanted to get that house in order, as to what we would be charging. Now last year, we, we knocked, knocked it down a bit because of. Of the Covid, you know, and even this year, it's uncertain. But what I said, what I said to Mike Wilson, the treasurer was. That we remain for this year and this year only. That what, the normal green fees, if they don't get to play, then we can look at. Not only talk, but I've got to remind councillors that the bowling club. Do a lot for themselves, they maintain the bowling, the bowling, it's our green, it's our responsibility. But the bowling club maintain it, they cut it, look after it and, and, and all, all the rest of it. And in the past, and I've got to be careful because I know VIBZ. Vibz is will be open. In the past, we've, through our accounts, we've bought machinery. But the bowling clubs gave us the money. So the bowling, bowling club has been more than fair with, with the town council over the years. And that's one of the reasons and all this would have been discussed at the park allotments meeting in front of the representatives of the bowling club. So I just decided, right, for this year, we'll leave the fees as they are. And let's get this Covid business out of the road and then we can look at, look at it the following year.
I think that's sensible. Does everybody agree with that? Yeah, Kevin agrees, okay, no problems there. Thank you for that Alan. The next item we've already discussed garden waste bin problems, Jim Lister was involved with that. We also have Tivoli, Tivel, I can't say the word, Tivoli contract renewal. And it's gone up slightly to a price of four hundred and nine pound. Plus VAT obviously, and it covers twelve grass cuts at Victoria Park. I think the increase on last year was about. They've actually put it up three percent on last year's prices to four hundred and nine pound plus, plus the VAT. Do we agree that we, we renew this contract?
Now just speak again Mister Chair.
Thank you Alan.
This, this particular contract, we, we've got away with it for a lot, a long, long time. It's as you've said to council, it's for the cutting of Victoria Park. But they also cut the grass from Victoria Park beyond the pit cart. Now the contract is, I mean, if you don't be putting this in the paper. But the contract is for cutting Victoria Park, but they've always cut the grass. From there, you know, you know the area I mean, obviously.
Yeah, yeah.
From Victoria Park right down past the pit cart. So, you know, we've always done well out, out of it and I would say. I would agree that we, we continue.
So what you're saying Alan, you believe we're getting value for money?
Definitely.
Yeah, okay.
We're getting, we're getting more than we're paying for.
Okay, Kevin, do you want to say something? Kevin, did you want to say something? Kevin, you're on mute.
Bloody clock it, there we go, right, yeah. And they've gone up to three percent, that CPI rate, so it, they're not trying to rip us off, they're just going up with. Natural inflation, so totally agree. If you're doing extra work, great stuff.
Okay. So Claire, can you please?
Can I just ask a question, sorry. Tivoli is always one that the external, the auditor picks up. And she always says, oh, you know, how would you know you're getting value for money? And then she'll say. Oh yeah, but it is part of a contract that you're in, isn't it? And I say, yeah. And then she'll, she normally asks Helen and she'll say, when does it come to an end and things like that? And I always go down the lines of it is kind of a specialised area. In that there isn't just Joe Blogs down the road who we can call on to do something like this. I'm just kind of mindful of what she might say this year, but. I guess if you guys are happy to go with the, with the increase, then that's fair, that is fair enough, but. Is there someone else equivalent to Tivoli? I don't know, I'm asking the question where bearing in mind what I've said about the standing orders. Is, is it a specialised, I do keep sort of saying it's a kind of a specialised area basically and, and she seems to nod at that and she's okay.
In, in the past, in the past Sharon, the, the contract was to cut the playing field on the Mungo Park. And also to cut the bowling club green. And the area that we talked about, well, that was the. And then we couldn't, we couldn't get anybody else, like you're saying, I mean, there wasn't anybody else. And that's when we started to purchase our own little mowers that we've been talking about. And, 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 and then the, because they asked for it, the bowling club. To maintain their own, cut their own, buy their own mower and put their own grass. So it's now reduced till Victoria Park, but it was a big contract. And we, and at the time, and I can't remember everything, I try my best. But at the time, like you said, the contract would be offered till others, but there was only them. Well, there wasn't Tivoli then, it was.
No, yeah, I remember, yeah, it was ISS or something, I, I, or something like that, wasn't it? Yeah. Right, that, that's fine, I just thought I'd mention it because Jean does pick up on it.
I know.
Who actually cut the grass at St Mungo?
Mike, Mike, Mike Blair.
Well, the question is, why isn't Mike cutting?
Well, because, well, the thing, the thing is, is that he's got to get his machinery. He's got to get his machinery from the Mungo Park down to Victoria Park.
And they've got a trailer.
I think, I think it's better that you're taking it with Mike. This is, this argument would not doubt the argument, but this discussion would take place. Quite a few years ago and I, I just can't answer that. I, I understand what you're saying.
It was merely as an act of the order that we thought Mike cutting St Mungo and then we're hiring a company to cut Victoria, that was all, yeah.
I just, if, if, if I answered that, I'll be guessing Kevin, I'm not gonna do that. But I know there was quite a bit of discussion at the time.
Okay.
About it, yeah.
Oh, okay, sorry, I'll fire it back the other way. Instead of spending thousands of pounds on repairing mowers and buying new mowers, why don't we just give a contracted Tivoli to cut St Mungo?
Well. That was because the, the job, the job wasn't satisfactory. They weren't happy and they weren't, they weren't meeting the contract and, and cutting. As often as they should and with regard to the bowling club. They were just cutting grass as you would cut your lawn and, and they were making a mess of the bowling club. Bowling green.
Yeah, yeah.
You go through this time before, I was just asking that to you.
Ah yes, no, you're doing right, that's what we're here for.
Okay, so what we're saying is it looks like we're going to agree to the three percent increase from Tivoli. And can that be looked upon Claire as being a renewal for next year please? Thank you. The next one is drainage issues at St Mungo's Park. I was down at the park last Thursday morning. And I was walking past the park and Mike Blair waved me across, he says, can you come and have a look in here? I says, yeah, no problem. Now, there was a lot of rain the night before. But I was absolutely astonished at the amount of. Water in that park. In fact, the entrance from North Road through the gate. It must have been at least six inches deep and that's no exaggeration. The path leading from Outgun Road at the far side of the park, across the park was totally and utterly impassable. Because it was again at least six inches deep. And I, I asked Mike to take photographs and I think possibly all have had a chance to look at those photographs. And yes, at this time of year, the water table is high, so it is, there's less chance of water getting way. And this was exceptional rain to be fair, but having said that, the problem seems to be getting a little bit worse as time's going on. Mike Blair has lifted a couple of inspection chambers. And he reported back to himself that yes, the water was running. But not as quickly as he would have expected to and it looks as if there is some restriction somewhere. Holding the water back. He was also a bit taken aback at how deep the drains were. I mean, I don't know how deep to have, but he says they were, they were a lot deeper than what he would have expected. Obviously during the summer, you'd expect this problem to be better than what it is now, but we do have a bit of a problem there. And the other problem, we had extensive flooding again on the same night up on West Street. In fact, one guy said he was on the road in Wellington's and it was that deep, he was virtually coming across the top of his Wellingtons. It has been reported to the proper authorities and a guy called David Bell. Who investigated a while ago in the area has been to look at the site. And met with a guy called Trevor Bell, who I think most of us know. And Claire is obviously aware of the flooding because she lives on the same stretch of street. And there's a meeting this Friday morning with I believe quite a substantial amount of people. From various bodies to do with the roads, the drainage and whoever at ten o'clock on Friday morning. And Trevor Bell has asked me to attend as a representative of the council. Because David Bell has suggested to Trevor Bell. That the problem, and he's agreed that the problem is when you get a substantial amount of rainfall. The outlet pipe is not a big enough capacity to take this volume of water. Is what, what he's basically saying, it's like putting down a thousand gallons of water down a one inch pipe. And obviously the one inch pipe wouldn't be suitable to take that amount of water. And they're now talking about diverting the actual gullies into another drain. Which runs down the centre of the road, seemingly the drains from West Street don't run down the centre of the road. They run down towards the railway line area. So that's been investigated and there's going to be some kind of survey done on Friday. Yes, what they've done last year by repairing the drain in the field seemed to have helped. But it hasn't cured the problem and it is now going to be investigated further. Now obviously that's nothing to do with St Mungo's Park. So could anyone wish to comment what we do on St Mungo's Park to try to find out A, what the problem is and B, how to solve it?
How often does it flood that bad at St Mungo's Park?
What Mike Blair tells me during this winter, that's probably the worst. But there's been similar, although not as bad floods previously this year. It seems to be progressively getting worse and he, he doesn't know, but he, he, it's a possibility. That you could have tree roots growing through land drains which, which then cause blockages. But I mean, it'd be very difficult to find where these drains run without digging up the whole park. The bit that survived, sorry, the bit that survived the best was probably the football pitch. It was virtually round the area of the football pitch and round the bottom running along North Road inside the fence. It was like a paddy field, it was, I, I was taking a backhand which water was there. It, it has now basically drained away, but there is still some on the path between Outgun Road. And, and my fear is if this continues in the way it is and a member of the public comes through that park. And to a certain degree has an accident or falls in the water, could we be responsible for that?
Fall, no, definitely not. How can, what I mean, I, I, I'm not against investigating. But if somebody falls in the water, it's like a puddle anyway, if they're falling. You can't be responsible for a thing like that, but. As we did, and Mike, and Mike knows, sometime, I think it was the WW builders that we got in. And there was a broken drain on the, on the football pitch. And they dug it up and, and it, it started to work all right. That area, that area down by. That what was the pudding grain down at the bottom at West Newton Road End. There, there's a drain cover there. And I, I remember it used to flood somewhere terrible years, years ago and that, you know, they don't. Whatever they're doing, I don't know. And it hasn't been bad for, for, but it was pleased now that it's starting to flood again. Well, there is trees, I mean, there's a lot of trees there and it's, like you've just said, possible. That the tree roots is, 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 but. You know, you've got to have somebody who, I think, who knows what they're doing.
Oh yeah, yeah.
And they're going to be there when, when it's, when the floods are there. But yeah, I, I appreciate that, but all, everything that you've said. It, it didn't make it right, but it's been in the past and corrected. And, and it's coming back. And all the water, all the water that we're talking about comes out of the allotments, the, the area of, of Outgun. Because that floods.
I think what we've got to look at is that, that flooding of late, it was torrential rain. But it floods the football pitch and the ground, but don't forget there's often been runoff water on the roads, et cetera, et cetera. What occurs even more, all going into one mains drain.
Yes.
Main drain cannot take all the water at the same time, then you're going to get localized flooding. And the easiest way to show it, back up the drain onto the football pitch. So how often does this often happen and, you know, what's the risk if we do nothing? All right, we're gonna. All right, we get a flooded pitch for a few days. For what? You know, why spend time when Mother Nature is just pouring in water down? And it's a one in a, what?
I'd agree with, I'd agree with Kevin. You know, it's been, it's been an awful lot of rain and we just leave it at the moment and see what happens next.
Couldn't agree more. I get the impression the consensus of opinion is we leave matters as they are and keep an eye on it going forward.
Well, you just have to go along the, any road and have a look in the fields and the floods in the fields.
Yeah.
Yeah. Even now this week, you go down to Wokington, other side of Prospect, just down that little dip, the whole swimming pool on your right hand side.
Yes.
That's fine. It's just that Mike, Mike Blair is concerned about it and he asked me to mention it at tonight's meeting. So I'll say to him that what we're going to do is leave matters as they are for the time being, but we will keep an eye on it to see if...
Keep a record, Mr Chairman.
Yes, keep a record and to see if it is getting progressively worse. And if it isn't getting progressively worse, well, as Kevin said, it's in the lap of the gods what comes out of that sky. And if it's got nowhere to go down the main drains, well, it's going to back up, you know, so. Okay, I'll mention to Mike Blair what's been said at tonight's meeting. Okay. Number 23, schedule of correspondence, notices and publications. And we've had quite a few Calc emails. And traffic concerns have been forwarded to relatively, to relative bodies. And we've also watched several things on the Clark's report. Transfer of assets is one of them. And we've had a reply from Atkinson Ritz and Solicitors. And when you read it, it's like knitting fog. Do you agree with that, Claire? And at the end of the day, it's a long-winded answer from Atkinson Ritz and, but it basically says at the end of it, they are still looking into the matter. But of course, the problem being is if Covid restrictions are lifted in the not too distant future, all being well, we'll be under pressure to get those toilets open. And so we do need this to be sort of put to bed. And it's a strange, it's a very strange reply because I said to Claire, when she sent me a copy of the reply from Atkinson Ritz and I've read it, but it's very difficult to understand. And at the end of the day, it is still in Atkinson Ritz and Solicitors court and we need to push them, Claire, to get that solved if possible, eh? The Grapes Hornets building, well, the planning officer, Caroline Fearan, she writes to confirm that an enforcement notice has been served. And I don't know if anybody's noticed, but the scaffolding on the outside of the building was removed over last weekend. And from a distance, the appearance of the building to me is acceptable. Now, whether that's right or not, I don't know if anybody else wishes to comment on that.
Well, that's, that's what I said at the last meeting, Mr Chair. That the further, the longer doors, the better that building's looking. In fact, you know, I'm probably the oldest resident on the council. But that's the best that the Grapes Hotels looked in my lifetime. You know, and it's like I said at last week's meeting, they had no right to do on the sandstone wall that what they did. But it was done and Allendale didn't do much about that. Now you can't ask them to take the clay enough. You can't ask them to go back because the wall will never be the same. But the paint is now, new windows, new doors, all painted and done. It looks good and I will just let things go, yeah.
I agree entirely. Does everybody else agree with that?
No.
I'm just a little bit wary of the time. It's six minutes to nine and just two or three more things to skip through quickly, please.
I can just have a quick one on the grapes.
Okay.
Okay. The last planning on there was for six units. There only looks to be three entrances. So I'm intrigued to whether they've gone back to the previous planning agreement where it's going to be three houses rather than six apartments. Also, yes, I agree, it does look very good. But that's not the point is that if you get away with it, it's setting a precedent for every other building in town. That they can just run rush on over planning regs.
Yeah.
Yes, but that's what we're saying. And I said at the last meeting, Kev, it's Allendale, Allendale who's allowed it, you know. It's their, it's their fault. And it would, you know, under what you're saying, it would have been Allendale that would have demanded, but it's them that's let them do it.
Yeah. But with Allendale doing that, what it's saying to all the developers in the town, agree to your plan and then do something different. Allendale are just funny around for 12 months and do now and you'll end up getting what you built.
I know. You're right in what you say.
He's right, yeah, yeah. He's right, yeah. But at the end of the day, this Patri Town Council has no powers except to just say to Allendale, you know, they need to look at it. And at the end of the day, it's up to them to come out with a suitable solution.
We asked them to do some of the work and they didn't and we're stuck with what we've got.
Correct, correct, Alan, okay.
Do we want to choose up the enforcement notice at all or should we just put that one to bed?
To bed.
Yeah, I agree entirely, Alan. Very quickly then, the basketball hoop, I believe, I believe it's arrived in the UK. I don't know where the hell it's come from, but there we go. Delivery will be arranged soon. And obviously, once that's arranged, it'll have to be installed, et cetera. CCTV compass have quoted £140 to remove the CCTV equipment from the co-op.
Well, we're stuck with that.
Yep. Isn't there a problem with, with the, the equipment as it stands now? It's going to cost us quite a bit of money to upgrade it.
Yeah.
The monitor was missing. They suggested we get just a new monitor, like a computer monitor. But at the last meeting, you decided not to continue with having the CCTV there. So contacted the company and they've said...
It never is valuable for money, never is valuable for money.
However...
Are we going to agree to let that company remove the CCTV equipment at that point?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
That's where it could come up demolish the building and CCTV will go with it.
Exactly.
When is, when is the co-op getting demolished, Kevin, have any idea?
I'm not Mystic Mag here, you know.
We mentioned the last meeting about a damaged lamppost on North Road and that's being looked at. And I believe Jim Lister was going to look at the footpath past Business Park towards Wigtown. Grip bin for Sheila Fell Close on order. Is that being delivered, do we know?
Yes, it's just arrived today. It's in my back garden. And I'm waiting for Allendale to get back to me. And I don't want to put it on Sheila Fell Close empty because the residents will go, town council, they've put an empty grip bin on. So I just want to make sure it is going to get filled.
I also requested at a previous meeting that they went around the town and looked at all the other bins because the one beside the toilet on the brand draw car park has been empty for weeks and weeks. I looked in it this morning and it is still empty.
Well, yeah, I'll report it then because all you need to do is go on the Allendale website and let them know and they'll come and fill them. But if you don't report it, it won't get filled, so.
Okay, could you do that, please, Claire? Okay. And the grant for under 19s application to upgrade swings at St Mungo's Park. I believe you organised that, Claire?
Yes, the grant application's gone in. We've asked for something in the region of 600 and so pounds to, yeah, just to upgrade the swings. So we'll just wait and see if that comes through.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. Okay, there's no applications for development. Has anyone got any items for the next meeting or any confidential items to report?
Mr Chair.
Does anybody know about that big development down Station Road? Has that gone through or not?
No, I had a look this week, David, and it's still in to be decided.
Right.
Okay. Mr Chair.
Yes, Alan.
I, I got some council business through the mail and I handed it to Claire. Claire, can you explain what that was about?
So it was a generic email from Allendale who were trying to support businesses through Covid. And it went to the changing rooms. I've checked in with Sharon and the changing rooms are already exempt from business rates, so it doesn't apply.
Can I, sorry, I've applied, we got an initial £10,000 off Allendale when they changed the regs. When central government changed the regs, at first we weren't allowed to apply. And then central government changed the rules in that exempt properties could apply and we got 10 grand. And I have seen supplied for more, but I haven't heard anything from those applications. I'm waiting, I'm waiting.
Sharon, are we going to get anything out of that 20 million?
Like Kev says, not Mystic Mag, which I was.
Just two other ones. Alan, you mentioned previously about a letter on public participation from...
Yes.
Somebody on Aitlby Road. I'm looking at that letter now complaining about the HG vehicles and about litter, plastic bottles, the speed of the farm vehicles. And it says, we understand that there is some legislation going through currently to limit the use of the road to access only.
I've sent that on Jim Lister, Alan, and it was Plumland that have applied for that. So I've sent that gentleman on to communicate with Plumland Council. However, it's very unlikely it's going to happen, but I didn't want to say that to the resident. So he's, he's been signposted to the, to the relevant people with that one.
Right.
Okay, fair comment. Now, our next meeting is due in next month in April, which will be a Zoom meeting. But there was some documentation previously saying that face-to-face meetings could recommence in May. Have we had any further information on that? Is that going to happen?
I hope so.
As far as I understand, it's still under debate because some people don't feel safe meeting. And again, the government guidance is work from home if you can. And it's, it's slightly still under discussion. And of course, is it the, is it the annual meeting in May where we do the elections and stuff?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Unsure at the moment, but I'll chase it up.
We may, we may have further information by the next Zoom meeting. Okay. See, my only thought on that one was, let's say they say to us, you can have face-to-face meetings in May. We approached the church hall people and say, can we use your property? And they say, no. Then where, then where does that leave us?
Oh, you mean, you mean North Road?
The Methodist Chapel, yeah.
I don't think they'll say no.
No, I don't either, but I mean...
I mean, the possibilities, the possibilities there, like you said. But I mean, it isn't, it isn't anything that we've got control over. But I'm not happy with this Zoom. I think, you know, we could have meetings in the, in the Methodist Chapel. And we can all sit six, two metres apart. It's big enough for that, but no, let's, let's hope that we can get back to proper council meetings and get some, get some more council members.
Yeah, agree entirely, Alan, agree entirely.
Has that census stuff been loaded up onto the website?
I haven't honestly checked. I'll have a quick look now if you want. Got sent over to Jonathan. He's usually fairly prompt.
Right.
I'll have a quick look now.
I can just ping him the email.
Cool, will do.
And I can put a link on Facebook.
Right, everybody, we've overrun, I'm afraid. It's five past nine now. Theoretically, we're supposed to finish at nine o'clock. So can I now please call the meeting to an end and thank you for all attending? And obviously, Kevin, I'll be introduced...